The time is five thirty on Monday, September eleventh, and I'd like to call this work session to order. First, on our agenda, our city updates. So, Ms. Solano, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair, City Council, and the mayor isn't here this evening. This is the week that he and a team of about six throughout the city and the airport in the chamber fly to Reno for the Reno Air Show invitation and an evaluation for the city to submit the application for move. So we're gonna lose them more in time. The chief's gone. Haley's at home, leaves early tomorrow morning, fire chief on Wednesday, so they're periodically gonna visit throughout the week. Um, I do have a couple of city updates, though. Uh, the RFP for the consulting services for the 2024 legislative season, it goes out tomorrow morning. And it should be out for two to three weeks, and we'll update City Council and the the leadership of um, our city attorney is here. Something happened to him at the moment, and then he'll facilitate the conversation, I think, with Counselor Martinez on on who will serve on the review committee with him, if he hasn't already. Um, it were just a couple of weeks out from that, but it will go out tomorrow morning. I think you've got a copy of it last week electronically. Um, can I think our our, will you pull up? There you go. If you see on the screen here, we'd like to share with council that this coming weekend with the public. Um, next Wednesday, September the twentieth at eleven o'clock, uh, the Planning Department for the city, along with some of the regional partners, will present the Brownsville area-wide plan presentation in the Public Police Department Community Room. It'll be able, also a Zoom option available, but be able to have a town hall feel where there will be questions and answers available on what's included in the area-wide Brownsville plan. So that's coming up uh, next Wednesday, um, September the nineteenth. Um, also, uh, next Monday, if I will bring back for you um, the budget calendar and schedule to see if we can confirm with some City Council, your your direction and intention on those work sessions. They would be about a month out if we look at it again next week. If you haven't looked at your calendar, then to determine what dates will work best for you. And lastly, um, I have distributed tonight the hard copy of the ARPA update. The most recent one is um, from um, August the thirty first. The interest statement came in pretty timely, and I sent it electronically to you, and I wanted you to have the hard copy today as well. Uh, the numbers indicate that um, the city has earned one point four million dollars in excess in interest um, since the receipt of the ARPA funds um, in twenty twenty one. The balance in the basic ARPA with um, some pending projects that have not been presented to City Council for final approval takes the ARPA balance down to eight hundred and forty seven thousand, three hundred and five. Before these last um, several projects are approved, it sits today at five million, one hundred and seventy two thousand, three hundred and five dollars. So there's a a pretty significant dollar value that's still out in pending projects. And the lost revenue balance um, is a separate attachment there, and I it has um, again, pending projects, but before pending projects, the email that I sent said our remaining revenue replacement dollars are four hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and thirty three. There are about three pending projects that have not been presented to council or determined whether they're they're coming, they're coming this way. Um, which takes the balance down to one hundred and eighty seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty three dollars. Uh, the mayor's asked staff for a recap of what's sitting outstanding, what has been incurred in the projects that you have approved out of the ten million, and we should have that presentation to you uh, for the budget presentations coming up next month to determine what that balance looks like going into January of twenty twenty four. As we'll have to have those final um, expenditures um, approved already by the end of next year. So good balances to carry forward into twenty twenty four in that last year. And that concludes the the city updates. Do you have any questions or directions for me?
Thank you, Ms. Solano. Questions from council? I see none. Counselor Maestri is the one to have a question.
Well, I just wanted to, I'm Mr. Hypolite, I'm letting you know that I'm sending you some things. When we were in executive session, you had made a comment that one of the people that we were considering was not a um, five oh one C three. So I'm sending you that information that was sent to all of us via um, an attorney, Don Banner, to um, Mr. Jagger. And so I wanted you to have that information because we were all a little taken aback by when you said that they were not a five oh one C three. Um, because to our knowledge, they were. So I do have their uh, filed paperwork um, and so forth, so that you can take a look at that because um, what had started, how this all started out was um, first, we were told that, you know, they were a church and not a five oh one C three. That went on for months. And then when they pulled their five oh one C three status and gave it to Mr. Jagger, again, now we're back to they're not a five oh one C three. So I just wanted to clarify that because, you know, that information that we receive is important. And um, it needs to be accurate. Um, and so if you weren't able to find it, it was sent to us um, a couple of months back, and I just want to clarify that because we if we're making decisions, we need to have, you know, the most accurate updated information.
So, thank you, Councilwoman Maestri. I will uh, review whatever you you send to me. I just sort of want to be clear for the purposes of um, this conversation, um, what was or was not discussed in executive session was determined to be legally privileged, so we we shouldn't discuss it in an open session.
I'm not. I'm sending you the information.
Thank you.
And you can determine that on your own and let us know. Thank you.
No problem.
Other questions for Ms. Solano? Counselor Graham?
I just wanted to see if there had been any update on the lights on for safety and how, if that's progressing along or where we are with that.
Yes, thank you. And I'm sorry I had a hundred percent of the numbers inaccuracy last Monday. Um, but I believe there's been forty nine applications submitted. The first ten are out for the environmental review uh, for safety by the police department, and the first ten have been selected uh, for funding. Um, out of those, it's about a sixty percent, forty percent split between what is in a census tract and what is not. And we have those resources for funding uh, both of them. So I think the committee meets later this week, and they can move down to the next um, ten for award. Thank you.
And Ms. Solano, I know that we're having a team-up to cleanup event October fourteenth. When are we gonna start publicizing that? Or or is there a plan for promotion to make sure that everyone knows, considering that this is a two-site event and not a one-site event?
Uh, well, you know, I think all of my directors of of Public Works are on Zoom today. I see Chuck up there and Haley's up there. Um, I'm sure soon it's time to put the Facebook ad together and put it on the website and and get the information out for just that purpose. We do have two sites. Last spring, we just had the one.
Counselor Maestri.
Um, Ms. Solano, I want to know, what was the amount of the excess tax revenue for twenty twenty two through the two? No, not excise, the excess tax revenue for, from the two-way ballot. From Tabor. Well, they told me it wasn't Tabor. They don't receive Tabor. There's a word game going back and forth. The email.
Yes. You don't want me to guess because I'll be wrong, and so I'll get the information out for the calculation.
But I can't understand why I can't get, just get the answer. Because I said Tabor in my initial email, and they said, oh, no, we don't receive Tabor. Okay, well, let me go back. And I read it off the ballot initiative, which was the excess tax revenue. I want to know what the amount is for twenty twenty two. We have budgeting coming up, and it would be. We don't have any?
Well, we'll share the
Regardless, for twenty twenty two, I'd like to know how much we received.
We'll go back and I I'll I'll share with you the calculation for the initial ballot. And it's not like we receive Tabor revenue. We just have to do the calculation of what is excess dollars. So the twenty twenty two result.
Well, you receive it when the taxpayers offer to forfeit it to you. So otherwise, we would have, you know, given it back to the taxpayers.
We would have. It sits in fund balance with a separately stated amount for requirement on the B one of your budget book. And but I'll bring the amount that was calculated, um, and it's still um, into twenty twenty two, which will come next month in the budget conversations. But I'll see if um, we can get to the calculation amount, and then also the previous years.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other further questions?
Would you send that to everybody?
Okay, seeing no other further questions then for uh, for Ms. Solano. I'll move on and hear from our friends at the county about property values. We're gonna have the public county assessor, Mr. Beltran, to the podium. Frank. Mr. Frank.
Just want to say thank you for asking me to come talk and speak. Um, open for any questions. Next month will be my forty-third year in the office, working from the beginning in the mapping department to uh, county assessor. Last seventeen, I've been your county assessor. Uh, ten years before that, uh, I was chief deputy in charge of reappraisals, which we're gonna talk about today. And this is the first time in all those years that City Council, the mayor, um, city manager ever asked us to come talk. So it's, it's gonna be nice. Um, I was gonna put together PowerPoint, but a lot of times PowerPoints don't hit what you want to say, what you want to ask, what you want to know. So I'm open for questions, anything you want to know. Mr. Flores sent me some questions that he had, and they were real simple. Um, and I know you probably want to go into detail, but uh, who's responsible for implementing the property value increases? Well, it's every county assessor. And the statute book. All we do is we follow statutes, what we have to do, what we can do, and what we're legally allowed to do. Uh, what prompted the reappraisal of properties? Again, statute. We have to do it every two years. Um, every odd year is a reappraisal year. Every even year is uh, what we call an intervening year. It's handled more for procedural. The the reappraisal year, the odd year, is a statistical analysis. The intervening year is a procedural analysis to make sure that we're handling the um, non-sold properties the same as the sold. Does that make sense?
Yeah, in fact, when I, when I started thinking about uh, the valuation increase, uh, it was really when I was sitting at home and looking at the information on my home, and what I noticed was uh, uh, it it was a huge increase. And and I understand that, you know, uh, you're just the messenger, and we're not here to kill the messenger, but
Oh, everybody does, please.
I know, but that's not our intent. You know, my intent, Frank, was really uh, to to have a um, uh, a professional discussion as to, you know, the statutory requirements that force you to do this. Uh, and and then the, maybe the uh, the options that property owners have if they feel that maybe uh, they can provide more information where their their valuation could be changed. Uh, my intent was just to kind of let the community know why uh, this happened. Uh, you're required by statute. But I think more importantly is, I think what's caught everybody off guard is how how big of an increase it was. And maybe you can give us some insight as to why that we saw such a great in uh, increase this year. Like in my case, it's beyond thirty percent.
Oh, yeah.
And and uh, it sounds like that's typical, but why so much? Uh, try to, I mean, and if you could just kind of elaborate on that.
You know, right here, that you that you'd asked thirty percent increase, why can't we do it? Why, why do we have to do it all at once and not split it up? Statute says we can. We gotta go by the collection period, January first. This collection period was um, January first of twenty one through June thirtieth of twenty two. That's all we can look at. We have to stop. We have to value everything as of June thirtieth. So at that time, before that, that period in twenty one and twenty two, there was bidding wars. If me and you were looking at a house and it was selling for five hundred thousand dollars, you really wanted it, five twenty five. I really wanted it, five fifty. Somebody else come in, five seventy five. The property owner takes it at five seventy five. That's the value of a willing buyer and a willing seller. It sets the market. And that was going on all over the place. Um, there's houses that I know that realistically in my head were worth probably four twenty, four thirty, and in three days, they were selling for five hundred thousand dollars. Five offers, three of them cash, for five hundred thousand dollars. It 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 was going all over town.
Uh, you, that might be a good place to to maybe answer this question that I have. Is that when you're looking at valuations uh, on homes, um, there's lots of different valuations. I used to be in the insurance business, and the 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 terms we used was replacement cost. Uh, how much was it gonna take to replace that house if it was totally, you know, burned to the ground? The other one was actual cash value, the value of the home, uh, taking the replacement cost minus uh, depreciation, which if the house was forty years old, uh, we used a different number uh, for insurance purposes. Explain to us the valuation that you use. It sounds to me like there's a third area, and that's market value.
See, only thing we could look at with unresidential property, when gosh, what year was it? Nineteen eighty seven, nineteen eighty nine in there? Everybody had the same assessment rates. Everything was, well, prior to that, it was thirty percent. Thirty percent on residential, thirty percent on vacant land and commercial. When they started saying, okay, and changing the statutes, when they allowed people to start using only market approach for residential property, they allowed the assessment rate to start dropping. So it went twenty nine, twenty one, twenty six, or nineteen, all the way down to what it is today. Um, the Gallagher amendment, Tabor, had a lot to do with that. Uh, Gallagher, you can only have, you've got to keep your commercial and your residential at a fifty-five, forty-five split. Um, Tabor, that's more with the mill levies than anything else. But now with with Gallagher being put to the side, um, there's no more fifty-five, forty-five split. Residential is gonna keep going and going and going until um, gets to where it is. I think we've seen the top, but stuff is still selling for higher than our values. They're just taking longer to sell. Instead of selling in three to four days, they're selling in two to three weeks.
You know, there's uh, there'd be an argument uh, that because of the higher interest rates, uh, we're seeing it in building permits. Our building permits this year are half of what they were last year. Uh, and when you talk to bankers and uh, m- mortgage companies, they're telling you that their businesses dropped in half because of the the interest rate. And so what, if you valued everything when the interest rates were three and a quarter, you know, or or four percent to today, the value of most homes would be a lot less today. But I think with your formula, uh, you now are saying that the next i- if there's been a decrease in market value in the city of Pueblo, we have to wait another two years uh, before that can be adjusted. Is that correct?
Correct. The our, we're in our next collection period for twenty twenty five right now. It's all of twenty-three in the first half of twenty-four. That will value for twenty twenty five, and honestly, we're not seeing a decrease. It may not go up thirty percent, and that's an average. You know, like you said, yours was higher. Um, our um, our vacant land, we were showing two hundred percent increase, all public county. But that's because Colorado City went up anywhere from eight hundred to a thousand percent. There's lots that went up from eighty-one dollars to three, five thousand dollars. People are buying property up there, holding on to it. It drove the market up. It drove the values up. Will it stop? Don't know. We don't even know if if with your scenario with the interest rates, if, you know, I I know of a property that they protested their value, and it was probably about, they wanted four hundred and ninety thousand dollars on it. They listed it. Four days later, it sold for almost seven hundred thousand dollars. So
It sounds like it's not, it sounds like it's not an exact science uh, in many ways.
Valuation is an opinion. It's it's, that's all it is. You know, all of us could go out and and do this building. Your home, and we're all gonna come up with a different answer. You have to get it the best we can, and I think uh, I think that they gave you a copy of our audit report. Uh, did you get a copy of that? That shows, we we have to be within ninety-five and one oh five. Point nine five percent and one point oh five of the value. Every, every reappraisal year when we're doing it, we have to stay within that pasiata. We have to be under a certain uh, COD. Um, this year, we were at ninety-six on residential. It was probably the best we've, our auditor told us it was the best we've ever been as far as our COD being low on our values. We could have taken it up to one, but in order to try to help the the citizens, the public on their homes, the values going up, we tried to keep it down to right around ninety-six percent. We didn't want to drop it to ninety-five because if the auditor throws out some sales, then we're out of compliance. If we're out of compliance, they issue the state board, this, the the state Board of Equalization will will order a reappraisal order for Pueblo County. They send a team in to reappraise this, could cost a few million dollars. Who pays for it? Citizens pay for it when the millies, mill levies have to go up, so.
When you're establishing market value, you're you're just doing this within Pueblo County. You don't use any calculations up north.
Nothing.
Because if if you look at our, uh, we have an economic dashboard on our, on our website. We have one of the lowest medium-priced homes in the state of Colorado. And uh, it it, you know, it's half of what it is in Denver and probably three quarters of what it is in Colorado Springs. So uh, ju- my last question has to do with the mill levy. At some point, the, when when will the county commissioners get to that? And how is that gonna affect people's taxes?
My realm is the county assessor's office. I do not know what the commissioners are gonna do. I mean, what's the city gonna do with theirs? Uh, I, you've got, you have the form on what uh, how much extra revenue they're gonna get. County's looking at probably about ten million dollars. Um, the city of Pueblo is looking at one point four million. I mean, everybody could lower their mill as levies prop, possibly. I don't know. That's not my decision on that. I just make sure we pass the audit, and I don't cost anybody any more money than needs to be.
I don't think we have any uh, purview over mill levy uh, for our portion. We do?
I think you have to vote.
Because it's it's basically uh, it's it's a pretty small amount. You know, we we really depend on sales tax. That's all. I I appreciate, you know, your coming and explaining that. I appreciate it.
Counselor Warner?
Hi, thanks again for coming. Um, so it was my understanding with Gallagher, it threw out that percentage that um, because before when we had Gallagher, you could only come up certain percentages every year.
Correct.
When we voted, when the people voted to get rid of Gallagher, because the people were upset with the assessed values. Because it's it's better for the economy if it, if they're assessed higher. Um, that's why it was voted out. But um, that's the real reason. We voted out Gallagher. So that's the reason why it all came at once. Maybe you can explain that.
No, it that's, that's not right.
With Gallagher, you could only go up a certain
You could go up a certain percentage, and they'd adjust the assessment rate. So you, right, you know, there's, there was studies that said through the Division of Property Taxation that says the assessment rate for twenty-three would have dropped down to five point something. And it's it's going to be if HH doesn't pass, six point seven six five, I believe. So there would have been a huge difference, and with this much extra revenue that's anticipated coming in, that assessment rate would have even gone down even further, probably. But now it's staying where it's at.
Yeah, also, I read that the feds um, are gonna keep the interest rate where it is for quite some time. But you you never know about that either, but um, that's kind of what they're saying right now, that it's gonna stick right in there for the next year. So we'll, we'll see what happens.
It's every, everybody thinks that the the market is going down, and we do not see it yet. So it's, is it gonna stay flat? Are values gonna stay where they're at in twenty twenty five? I I don't know. I don't know.
Other questions? Um, Frank, can you talk a little bit about the mill levies that we have in the county? Or that people, like that, when you get your um, you know, property tax information at the end of the year, um, it has the mill levies broken up into Library District and um, all the, you know, uh, School District sixty. Can you talk a little bit about what those mill levies are?
Those are all set by each district, well, just just like you just mentioned a little bit ago, is you're gonna be working on your budget. What do you need to um, to uh, work on for twenty twenty four? And you'll be setting your your mill of your budget in turn, which means you're gonna set a mill levy. Uh, right now, your mill levy is uh, one point five six three three, if I remember getting it right. Uh, the counties is thirty point four three six. The library is um, about a half a mill. Um, School District sixty's forty-two mills. Um, and then I just threw Pueblo West and School District seventy in there. Uh, Pueblo West is a little over twenty, and seventy is a little over forty. So they, these budgets are set. They see what they want to uh, what they need to work with, and they set their mill levies accordingly.
Counselor Tensio?
Yeah, talking about HH, uh, I know the city and the county have the ability to lower their mail levy. Do the other taxing agencies have the same ability?
I believe so. I I don't
I don't think it has to go to a vote either.
Uh, not for a lowering.
Yeah.
All for lowering.
Not for a lowering. They don't have to go to
We can do that by ordinance.
Um, a lot of them, I remember in the old days, since I'm been there so long, is they were always scared of the ratchet-down effect. So what they did was there a few years, the county had a reduction in their mill levy, but they called it a credit and not a lowering. So they were always able to take it back up.
Yeah, yeah.
So
It's just gonna be interesting.
That was a long time ago.
I I don't see HH, Proposition HH, not passing. Anytime you take something that the voters says they're gonna lower their taxes, it's it's probably gonna pass, but uh, my problem with HH is that they're using trying to use the money for higher, for education, when they could do that a different way, and we could still lower the tax rate by ordinance, literally. We can lower the mill levy.
There's some good things and some bad things about HH. Um, I think the one thing that's good that that over all the years that people have been trying to do and and up north in the capital, they don't pass is uh, stuff for the seniors. Now, this is going to
Yeah.
raise it up to a hundred and forty thousand instead of forty, and it will follow them around throughout the city or the state, whatever they're gonna do, but it it will allow them to move around. Um, so if uh, an elderly person needs to move from a four-level home into a condo rancher, they're not gonna lose their their exemption. It will go with them. So that's a plus. Um, but that's just what the people have to decide now.
Yeah, we'll see. It's gonna be interesting.
Yes.
Mr. Hypolite?
Uh, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I I just sort of want to say to make sure all the council members understand the analysis of of what you can and can't do with the taxes. It's a tiny bit more complicated. Um, de- depending upon how you lower it and what you try to do when you bring it back, there's additional analysis that would need to be uh, run through before we could determine whether it needs to be done by a vote of the people or simply can be done by ordinance. That's all I would say.
Uh, Mr. Beltran, can you talk a little bit about um, if a resident in the city gets, you know, their evaluation, and it's went up tremendously? What can they do to appeal that, or what's the process? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. Uh, the appeal process is over, first off, anybody listening. Um, once they get their notice of evaluation in May, they have thirty days. Well, this, this year, it went, it used to stop from used to go from May first to uh, the last working day of May. They carried out to June tenth this year. Um, once they protest to us, the assessor's office, then we review it. We make a determination. We either approve it, deny it. If it's denied, we send them a notice of determination. If it's denied, we send them a notice of determination. If it's approved, we send a notice of determination as well, but the denials on the back of that. It states what their next step is to go to the county board of equalization. Which is the county commissioner is just putting on a different hat. Um. Usually the last. Seven, eight years, they've farmed it out to a um. Uh, to attorneys. To sit as the board of equalization and hear them make their recommendations. Um. Once that determination is made, those have to be concluded, I believe from July twentieth through August fifth. Once those determinations are made, they are sent um, another letter stating that they could either go to district court or B A. Or arbitration. Um. We, if something is approved and we don't like it as the assessor's office, we cannot appeal it. Once, once they rule in the favor of the taxpayer, we have no recourse. Um, with everything else, they have a recourse.
Yeah, I um. I think that that helps to clarify a lot. Um, do you have to pay to appeal?
Not with the county or the county board of equalization. Um, I I don't even think you have to if you go through the board of assessment appeals in Denver unless you're a commercial property. Then I think there's a fee and you have to be represented by an attorney.
Okay. Counselor Flores.
Uh, the deadline was missed for the twenty twenty-four year, but if they want to do it next year, they have.
For the twenty twenty-three year, we're not in twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-three year. So they missed May. And uh, it's water under the bridge, but.
Every May.
And they do, they can do, they can file next year.
Next year. Will not be a. Um. Reappraisal year. It'll be an intervening year. Um. Only the ones that have either removed something from their property. Um. Added something to their property, had a building permit where we have to go out and review it, will get a notice of de- uh, notice of valuation. Everybody else in their twenty twenty-three tax bill, there'll be a little statement, consider this your notice of valuation. Uh, if you want to protest to see the assessor's office in May, that type of thing. But yes, you every year, May.
Hmm. Well, thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Mister Beltran? Seeing none, thank you so much, Frank, for coming. And we look forward to our next property evaluations in May. All right, we're going to hear next from our friends at Grassroots Gravel. So can I have Mister Davidson to the podium?
All right, thank you uh, for having me and there should be a presentation to go with this. So. Um.
Over here, Adam.
Thank you. Ooh, is this me?
Yeah, you drive.
Oh, great. That's perfect. All right, so thank you, counsel, for having me. Um, and I wanted to be clear that the purpose of my visit tonight was really just to um. Give some transparency to what is going on later this year. I'm not looking for anything from the city other than, you know. The the future and the vision of this of this project and this event is much bigger than a single year and it has a. A lot to do with building partnerships across agencies and organizations. Um, so one of the big reasons that I wanted to be here tonight was to share the provenance of this event and and the vision for it. Um, so really what we are, right, is. We're we're rooted in community organizing and I've been working with different organizations in this region for the last decade. Some of you council members have worked with me before on different projects, um, and others may I may be new to you. Uh, but my background is in community organizing specifically in outdoor recreation and tying it into public health and economic development. Um. And my goal with this with grassroots gravel is to build something that's world class right here in Pueblo, Colorado. And doing it with local stakeholders and uh, doing it with meaningful outcomes that are not just. Uh, fleeting jobs that are service industry serving, for example, outdoor recreation, leaving out locals um, from this. From all these different experiences that are right in their backyard. Um, it is doing something that's bigger than just a party once a year. Uh, and in case anyone's unfamiliar, gravel cycling is exactly what it sounds like. It is riding bikes on gravel roads. So uh, dirt roads, gravel, it can look different, but the thing is. It's the reason that I'm diving into this specifically, a lot of you have worked with me on the trails out at Lake Pablo State Park that might sound familiar. Um, is that with gravel cycling, it's something that. Oh, it's got a lot louder, uh, is something that you don't need specific equipment. Um, for to get involved in it. Uh, folks don't need the technical skills that they need for mountain biking and it can be social for folks. Um, whereas mountain biking can be a little bit harder, um, and it also gets people out of town, you know, gives them an opportunity to leave from their house without the car. Uh, and experience Pueblo County in a different way. And so there's a bit of a history here. And um, Visit Pueblo has done some foundational work in funding outreach and marketing. Um, for getting people to come here and and experience the gravel roads within Pueblo County and and starting from the city. So they invested in uh, the gravel guide there, which if the folks haven't seen one of those, I'd love to give one to you. It's a physical guide that I can bring by. Um, and those are distributed in shops uh, throughout the state and the mountains, Mountain West really. Um, and Visit Pueblo was also running a marketing campaign when they released that that was starting in twenty-one and ran through twenty-two. And then a group called Gravel Locos that runs an event down in Hiko, Texas was, uh, they wanted to expand their event to Colorado. Uh, met with Pueblo and that was in. Yeah, it was twenty-two, twenty-one, anyway. Um. They had their event last year in town and I was involved in that from the first meeting where their entire team was here. I did that pro bono. Because I believed in the value that that brings to our region, um, and also the uh, the new benchmark that they'd be setting for. The production of an event that takes place in Pueblo, Colorado. So um, that event. Was scheduled to happen in twenty twenty-three, and this is where the provenance of grassroots gravel comes in. So gravel locos was scheduled to happen in twenty twenty-three. Um, I was again neck deep in the organizing of that with the stakeholders, dealing with permitting. I designed all the courses and. That event fell through because there was some pushback within the industry. Um. Gravel Locos is a pro-focused event that does have plenty of recreational riders in it, but at its core, it's a pro event. And they received some pushback from Lifetime Fitness and they had actually. I won't put. Uh, motive behind why this happened, but their their twenty twenty-three event that happens in Trinidad was shifted on top of the same date. After both races had an initial date announced for twenty twenty-three. And uh, it was stacked on top of gravel locos and, you know, lifetime is a very large company. They're publicly traded, they're they're huge. And so. Uh, the team at gravel locos, because of their target audience, which is bringing in professionals, uh, chose to back out of the market. And that was in June, so we didn't know that that was happening definitively until June. And, you know, I've been a stakeholder here and collaborating with stakeholders on a high level in this region for, again, almost a decade. And when I saw that, I thought, great, another flagship event that Pueblo was losing. And so I saw this as an opportunity for the region to do something locally that was owned locally. Um, that with folks that are based here, um, but bringing in this level of production that. Gravel Locos brought to Pueblo. And so when we found out about that, I made the choice to launch full in with grassroots gravel. And create an event that was going to be produced at a professional level, bringing in professional partners and sponsors in the industry, bringing in professional media. Um, to highlight this region, but then tweaking it such that we're focused on the everyday rider and bringing in new riders and having a presence here year round. And tying and tying in the organizations here and throughout the state that are doing really progressive work about uh. Making outdoor recreation a bit more representative of the entire community where it's taking place. So what does that mean in Pueblo, Colorado? That means it's not just your elite, you know, upper middle class or white collar. Citizens on a ten thousand dollar bicycle out there. It is, you know, engaging youth. All the way down to, you know, maybe ten, twelve, you know, high schoolers, whatever, middle schoolers. Uh, getting outside, working with the Boys and Girls Club to get them engaged, to get these youth that might be interested in getting outside. Or who might not even realize that they might be interested in getting outside. And it's not just cycling. Sure, this flagship event is going to happen every year, um, but the goal is that. It shifts what outdoor rec could look like in Pueblo and what the new precedent is going to be moving forward. So I covered some of this in what I was just saying, but the cause of this is we want to create. An opportunity for people to aspire to something every year, just something physical, something different, something outside the box of their everyday activities. It's nice to have a goal, you know, everyone here has probably walked or run a five K at some point in their life that benefit. Something and, you know, those give you an excuse to go on a walk once a week because you know in May you've got your thing happening or whenever it is. Um, so the other thing is an annual and reliable event. We can't develop an outdoor recreation industry in Pueblo, Colorado and uh, we can't build up. Public health strategies, programs and outcomes around a maybe, if we want to give people an opportunity to build towards something and get their body moving. And so we needed something, in my opinion, that we can rely on, that we know is going to happen every year. And that is stakeholders that are actually dedicated to being here and making it happen for reasons beyond just. Having a big event and being proud of that, you know, having a vision that's bigger than that, and that's where regional health and economy come in. So working with local businesses, local organizations, bringing in. Industry partners that are outside of this organ- outside of this region to help fund something like this. So that way it's not on the shoulders of everyone in town that's either got donor fatigue or sponsor fatigue because we all know all of the same players always are asked. Hey, can you be the title sponsor for X, Y, and Z? And so not only engage in the community in a way that is. Uh, actually helpful for folks and giving them an opportunity, but then removing the burden from the local businesses in terms of sponsoring this thing. Until they want to. Um, and then, you know, at its core, part of the proceeds of this event. You know, to carry on what gravel locos set forth was, it supports volunteer firefighting. We're supporting the Red Creek Volunteer Fire and Rescue Department out on Red Creek. Um, but, you know, I spoke with uh, a few different chiefs this year and our our courses go through four different jurisdictions. And so that's something where as we grow this event, you know, that support for volunteer firefighting and volunteer rescue. Um, can expand and diversify throughout Pueblo County and then, you know. Where the funds or a portion of these funds are going. Um, is going to vary and grow um, as the event grows. You know, because I want to, I want to work with our stakeholders, you know, whether it's at the city or at uh, the county or our nonprofits that we're working with or our sponsors, you know. Where does it make sense? Where is this needed? Who can we engage? And, you know, since launching this, and again, this brand didn't even exist in June. Uh, we were printed in fifty-two eighty magazine in the September issue included in their um, in their gravel overview article that was a full spread of of, you know. Beginning gravel riding and of all the events in the state, you know, we were one of six that were included in this. Um, and we've been featured, that, excuse me, we've been featured um, on more than one article about uh, highlighting events that are coming up this year. Um, been on podcasts in the Colorado Outdoor Industry Office, which is part of O Edit, uh, highlighted us just recently. Um, I've kind of already covered the stakeholders and I'll make sure, I hope that you all have a copy of this presentation and I can provide any information following. But, you know, we have our community, our municipalities, and then Ambipar response. So the community, the folks that are participating that live here, the folks that are coming to visit, our local businesses, the municipalities, all of you. Pueblo County, the folks over in Colorado City and Rye that we're going to be riding through, you know, folks are going to be there, they're going to experience those areas. And then Ambipar Response, so this is our title sponsor this year. And this is where bringing in stakeholders that have a have a have a reason to support something like this. They're they're getting something out of it because Ambipar Response is an international response leader. That does training as well and they took over part of the contract out of the test track. So this is, this is an organization that has a stake and a passion for supporting volunteer firefighting. You know, that's where they tie in and they just moved into this region. And, you know, they're a company that's looking to build connections with the community that are meaningful. And so. I reached out to them to talk about the vision for this event and what we're doing in the community and they were interested and they're in. So they're helping to fund this and Ambipar Response, that's, you know, they have. They have offices throughout the world, literally, they're headquartered in Brazil, they're America's um, headquarters is in Texas. And and yeah, they're just, they're just getting started out there and building an incredible facility, updating everything that's out there. So they're helping to make this a reality and. Perfect example of somebody not only bringing jobs to Pueblo, but also supporting this, which is a whole different animal. Um, and we have sponsorship coming from across the whole outdoor industry and throughout our region too. So we've got some great community support, but then also from within. The cycling community. Um, our twenty twenty-three event, you know, I'm not going to dive into the details. I would gladly nerd out on this with any of you if you want to learn about it. Um, but we have four different route options all the way down to fifteen miles because the goal was to provide something for an just average citizen. Like the same same target audience that might do a couch to five K, you know, give people that. Don't consider themselves or maybe even have any interest in being considered a cyclist, but might ride a bike with their family. Or as a personal goal once a year in this event. And if, again, if we know that it's happening every year, people can actually plan around that. So. Um, yeah, we're going to have four route options. Every single route is going to have support and support vehicles. Uh, we're having our after-party at Fuel and Iron, um, and we're having an expo out there during the day. And the expo and the after-party are going to be open to the public. And. There are routes to give you an idea of where we're going. And, you know, in terms of having a presence in the community, and this is something that I think is key that. Even events with the best intentions do not do this, you know, um. If you bring in an event from outside the community, it happens one day and you get you get the buzz that's built around it. Leading up to it and then it's just dead, you know, it's great, and then maybe it happens next year. But we're here every single week running group rides and they're growing. And the goal of these are not just elite athletes, they are growing with everyday people. And then we're building partnerships with. Departments within the city, talking with nonprofits out in throughout the community to figure out where can we support them? And uplift the efforts that they're doing. Um, you know, Pueblo Parks, I've been chatting with them about some ideas that we might be able to collaborate on moving into. The future, um, talking with some folks at the Boys and Girls Club, and I think that we're actually going to be meeting with them. Uh, to support one of their programs on Friday. And so. I mean, the the best way to describe what we're building here is that, so we are not a nonprofit, but um. There's a reason for that and it's because especially with the timeline we have right now, there's no way we could have been agile enough to make this happen. Um. And, yeah, we're, we're here. I mean, I don't know what else I could do. I mean, I'm at the core of this thing, to be frank, and. Um, I have a track record of of doing work here, um, that matters in the community in regards to. Um. Making sure that we have outer recommendations that are sustainable and and that we're increasing equity to to get more of the community out there. Um, so. I really would love any questions you have. If folks want to check out our website, it's right there on that massive QR code. It's probably the biggest QR code I've ever seen. So um, I'm I'm open to any questions.
Great, thanks, Adam. Questions from counsel, Councilor Martinez or Takea?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mister Davidson, for uh, bringing this event to our attention. And um, just for the community involvement. Um, question. How do folks get involved with this ride?
So the the ride and race on October fourteenth is, that's the flagship event and that's, I don't even know if I covered that, but there it is, yeah. So that's, that's the flagship event and they register for it, you know, it's, it's a paid event. Um, and all the participants, they're going to get like a T-shirt and a water bottle and a bunch of cool stuff and food. Um, but so they register by going on our website at grassrootsgravel.com, but then our weekly rides have no fee. And that's period. I mean, all that it is is, you know, please sign our waiver because we're providing the service for you to.
Do you all meet up somewhere consistently?
Yeah, we every week, every week. So this is actually part joke, part serious, is we meet every Tuesday at five thirty P M. At the corner of Red Creek Springs and Pueblo Boulevard. Period. Except for freezing rain. So. Literally, if it's negative twenty, it's on. If it's thirty-three and raining, no dice. Hundred and five degrees, we're going. But, yeah.
Last question, um, do folks need special bicycles or if kids are getting involved with either the weekly ride or the October fourteenth ride? Do folks need a special equipment or bicycles, things like that?
No, people don't need special equipment. I mean, what you do need is you need a reliable bike, like one that you just know is going to work. Um, which means Pueblo, Colorado, you're typically want to, going to want some sealant in your tubes because we all have loved to step on or ride over some goat heads. But besides that, you know, other than a really skinny tire road bike, you're good to go and also helmets. You know, so reliable bike, helmet and some water, that's the key and. You know, so reliable bike, helmet and some water, that's the key. And uh, I mean, yeah, that's the key right there.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Adam, do you have um, an economic impact that you're projecting that this event will bring to Pueblo each year?
So, great question. And so with Gravel Locos, that event brought about two hundred fifty thousand dollars of um, you know, rentals, bookings, all the associated like tours and that we could, that we could directly uh, attribute to that or at least correlate it to it. This one with such a short runway has been challenging at best to project because especially post-COVID registration for things like kind of a hockey stick for the most part, um, especially with events like this because it's rain or shine. And thus people wait to see whether it is going to be rain or shine. That being said, I mean, registration's going well, but I can't I can't project what that dollar number would be yet. I mean, I, I'd gladly sit down with, with uh, the, the chamber and chat about what that could look like, you know, so.
Do you anticipate there being more Puebloans that ride in it or more out of town people?
Yes. So there will definitely be more Puebloans that ride in it. And that's, that's actually one thing I'd want to highlight too is that why are there more Puebloans riding in it? Because we're promoting it to Puebloans. Now, this is um, a fundamental differentiator between the two events, period. I mean, if right, if we want to compare Gravel Locos and Grassroots Gravel. And to be clear, Gravel Locos did important work with setting a high precedent here and they, they supported this community in a good way. But that being said, the target audience was not Pueblo. And so, yes, we have, I'm actually curious to look at the data because I haven't dug that up, but I mean, I'm seeing people from Pueblo sign up. I know that. And it's folks that I know were not there last year because involved last year. And then also I'm seeing people that are signing up for the fifteen, which is a whole different animal than, you know, forty, fifty, hundred mile ride. And so not only are we, yes, we're getting more engagement from Pueblo, but we're also getting a whole new audience that didn't have before.
And how much is it, is it to enter the race?
The, the fifteen is fifty. The seventy-five, oh my gosh, the, the, I'm sorry, the, the forty is sixty-five. The seventy-five is a hundred and the hundred and ten is a hundred and thirty-five. Don't quote me on that. I'm pretty certain I'm right though.
Okay.
And it's all, it's all this is on the website too. So, yeah.
Fifty on up.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions? Seeing none, thank you so much, Mr. Davidson, for that presentation and
Yeah, thanks for having me.
We look forward to seeing you in October. All right, our last agenda item then is the twenty twenty-four Community Development Block Grant Recommendation from their Advisory Council. So can I have Mr. Mr. Harameo to the podium? And Mr. Harameo, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
And Brian Gallagher.
Member, members of council. Um, during the month of May, the Department of Housing and Citizen Services requested uh, applications from the community for community development projects and programs. Um, the department received twenty-one applications during the month of May. And uh, it is the role of the Citizens Advisory Committee to evaluate those applications as they conform to the consolidated plan that we have submitted to HUD. And Floyd Harameo, to my right, is the Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee. And I will yield to him to explain the process and the results.
Well, good evening, council members. Thank you very much. Just want to say that uh, our administration cap, we have twenty percent. We have twenty-eight percent allocated to ADA club ramps. We have thirty-seven percent allocated to housing and community development, community development. And we have fifteen percent which is allocated to public service. People that kind of need assistance. And our total in public service is two hundred and thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty, which isn't much. Cap that fifteen percent of the grant. And it's primarily directed toward low income people. And the scoring and the rank was number two for senior transportation, which is SRDA, which is a vital need. Then we had, it's all about being a, a team Catholic charities, which we sponsor quite a bit. And um, the fourth ranking was homeless youth services. If we have a major problem with homeless youth in our city. And number six, we have homeless prevention, which is Posada. And we've helped Posada quite a bit.
Let's see. One, one in the middle at, at um, the project that ranked number five was the Homeless Sportive Services for Posada.
And that totaled two hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty. After we finished allocating all the funds for public service. Now we're going into brick and mortar, housing, infrastructure, facility funding, recommendations. There was nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars available. Four hundred thousand allocated to the city for ADA curb ramps. Low income area benefits, the census, tracks. Where fifty-one percent of the residents earn less than eighty percent area median income. And them rankings were number one, minor repair program. And that was seventy-five thousand dollars. Number two was homeo, homeowner rehabilitation, which was seventy-five thousand dollars. Number three was emergency services and repairs for seniors. Which there is quite a few seniors in our city. Number four was vehicle garage and water earning repairs, water damage to the East Side childcare. Because a lot of parents do need childcare. Then number five, Crystal Place improvements, that was sidewalk. And number six, the Grove Neighborhood Improvements, that is sidewalk. And number seven, we had the parking lot improvements at at Posada.
The department received uh, two applications this year that qualified for a subset of CDBG funding. Uh, CDBG CB funding, which was appropriated under the CARES Act. Now, the uh, Citizens Advisory Committee evaluated each one of the proposals and they ranked them in order that best aligns with the needs identified in the consolidated plan. And the number one uh, application received this year also qualifies for the CB, CB funding was eviction prevention from Pueblo County. It's a partnership with the Tenth Judicial District and Colorado Legal Services to help individuals avoid eviction. That received the highest score of everything at eighty-three point eight. Uh, the second application received um, this year that qualifies for CB funding is the Pueblo Rescue Mission's Emergency Warming Shelter Building Acquisition. That was ranked ninth and scored sixty point six. Request was for four hundred thousand dollars. Unfortunately, uh, we received about one point seven million dollars in requests um, for um, bricks and mortar projects and four hundred and seventy-eight thousand for community uh, public services. So the requests exceeded the funds available. And these, the agencies and projects uh, identified on this sheet just scored lower and were ranked lower than the other uh, programs. It's not to say that they would not do uh, benefit the community, but the higher ranked projects benefited the community more. So uh, what the projects that we were not able to fund was the Food Sack Nutrition on Wheels and Mobile Shower Program from Public Cooperative Care for a hundred and fourteen thousand. Homeless Shelter Operations from the Pueblo Rescue Mission at a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Sidewalk curb and gutter repairs on Bowman Avenue for ninety-four thousand, five hundred. And Benefit, Benefit Park Improvements for a hundred and eighty thousand. Also, um, sidewalks at Bragden and Logan. Um, and the Portland Park Basketball Court Resurfacing and the Bradford Park uh, Basketball Court Rehab. Uh, those were the projects that were not able to be funded due to the exceeding uh, funding available. Um, as far as recognition, I'd like to personally thank uh, the members of the Assistant Advisory Committee and Floyd Harameo to my right. In no particular order, except for alphabetically, we have the Citizens Advisory Committee listed. Do we have members for who would like to stand for recognition or
Yes, would you stand?
Raise their hand?
State your name and what district you represent, please. And I'm Floyd Harameo. I represent District Two, which is the East Side.
And that concludes our report. We stand for questions.
Well, fantastic presentation, Mr. Harameo. Thank you for your time and thank you for the CDBG um, advisory uh, group advisory people here as well. Um, what questions are there from Council, Councilor Graham?
Thank you. Thank you so much for this presentation. So I have a question. Um, you were going to look at funding the rescue mission for four hundred thousand, but not funding the operating for one hundred and twenty-five thousand was the one hundred and twenty-five thousand for the um, shelter that already exists or what, what was the difference there?
The request for the hundred twenty-five thousand was for the shelter that existed and it public service funding is capped from CDBG regula, regulation that no more than fifteen percent of the grant. And based on the applications received and the ranking from the commission, it fell below the two hundred and thirteen thousand dollar limit. The uh, the use of CB funds in this uh, year's cycle um, extended another hundred thousand to public services. Had that not been available, the number one ranked application from Public County uh, would have con, consumed or utilized one half of the public services budget.
Okay. Yeah, I guess my, what I'm trying to get at is why we would um, fund a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in operating funds to the existing mission. Um, that you chose not to do that, but you chose to possibly give them four hundred thousand dollars for a new shelter. And what that looks like.
It's just based on, on the, what projects qualify for what type of funding. So the based on the applications received for public services, they were just ranked higher, ranked better than the application received from uh, Pueblo Rescue Mission. But the, the second request or second application from the rescue mission qualified for a subset of CDBG funding that didn't have as much competition.
And then I saw the rankings on there in that one area, if you could go back, Clint. Um, for the hundred thousand dollars to DHS, I think that was ranked number one.
Correct.
And then the mission was ranked number nine. How, how did you, where's the other rankings?
That's easy. Um, in the how, in the uh, infrastructure, we've got rankings uh, one through seven. Project eight, which is over here at the Bowman sidewalks. That fell below the in, the amount available because four hundred thousand of it is utilized for ADA improvements. But the rescue mission application um, qualified for CB funding as it responds to the additional homelessness that we've occurred since pandemic.
Okay, understood. And there's going to be a public hearing about?
September twentieth is the public hearing to amend the annual action plan at three o'clock at the Department of Housing and Citizen Services Community Room.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? House from I Street?
Since when is administration twenty percent? Usually we see that at ten percent.
Administration for CDBG is higher than typical grants and unfortunately, it is not enough to uh, administer CDBG in accordance with the regulations. Um, it, it could always be fatter. It, it is, it is a double what you typically find in a administrative line item or a grant. But the requirements for CDBG are a bit more lengthy and they have allocated um, twenty percent available to administration. That is the bu, budget funding source for our department.
It's for your department, not for people receiving it to administer those funds.
No, no. Um, it's only eligible for administering the grant, not administration.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Um, so I, on here, there, you know, there's the basketball court resurfacing, rehab sidewalks, park improvements, more sidewalk. Is, do you um, can, i- is it possible if we can connect like Public Works and our Parks Department to the applications that were not funded, funded? So that way we can see if we can include these projects in department budgets moving, you know, for twenty twenty-four?
Yes, it's possible to um, request projects uh, be funded from other sources. If it is funded through general fund, um, it does not carry the complexities of federal fund.
My question is, I understand. My question is, would it be possible if you can connect these applicants to Public Works or Parks and Rec? So that way they can see if it's possible to include them in their gen fund, you know, uh, budget request for, considering that we're about to go into budget negotiations because it think, you know, it seems like park improvements and sidewalk and resurfacing are things that we should probably be considering anyway if we're going to improve. You know, the city through our Public Works or, or Parks Department. So can you, can you reach out to them and see if they can connect with those departments?
I'll connect with the directors themselves. The, the various departments created these budgets that we use to evaluate. So they're fully aware of the projects.
Great. Councilor Maitri?
Did they create these? Um, did they create these because they don't have the funding within their departments? And since this is a um, public funded grant here that possibly, you know, as the municipality, we should be on the receiving end of the sidewalks and the improvements necessary if they're not in there. But obviously they're not in the department budgets or otherwise they wouldn't have put them on the list.
But actually they're all citizen derived. Um, we have a grassroots system where uh, the community requests these projects from the actual neighborhood. So they, they approached um, Public Works with a request to to create a budget so that the commission or the committee could evaluate it. We, they used to work directly with the departments, but with Open Gov, uh, we have brought the applications in an online format. So soon as the applications are received by our department, they queue the various departments. Um, if it's a public works project, it goes to Bob Quintana and he starts working on the estimate at that time. So they're derived from, from the citizens and then they don't come from the departments.
Yeah, they are derived from the citizens, but it looks like they're to improve, you know, city sidewalks and, and uh, city parks.
Correct, yeah.
And so that's a city asset.
Yeah, the, the uh, this, these are for community projects. They're not for personal um, personal gain. Um, on Personal gain, um, on the housing programs where they allocate funding to a particular program. An applicant can apply to have their home repaired if there's something wrong. But in the bricks and mortar process, it it is for either a public facility or a public improvement.
Well, yeah, these are public improvements, right, the sidewalks and so forth?
Yes.
And so we're. It just seems like sometimes those should be the priority over. Some of the things that look like they're being funded, like things for Posada. You know, this is actually city. Belongs to the city and it is public funding, it is taxpayer money. So I would think that we would go to improve, making improvements on the city before we do other organizations.
Correct.
That's what, that's just the feeling of it, so.
Well, according to the rankings of the committee, they saw that the facility delivered a service to the community that felt. That was worth funding.
Okay.
So, can you talk a little bit about next steps? Brian?
Next steps, um, there's three next steps. Based on your direction, the recommendations from the committee here. Uh, for all the twenty twenty-four projects, I will work to develop the twenty twenty-four Annual Action Plan. And so that will incorporate the projects that are presented here and through a public process. Hold public meetings, take comment on that and then bring the action plan to you for approval. Upon approval, it'll be sent to HUD for their review. The other two, we received two applications that qualified under CDBG CB funds. The eviction, uh, program is, uh, a. Identified program in our twenty twenty Annual Action Plan when we received the CARES Act funds, so that. Only needs an agreement to be ratified by you to be. To put the county in motion to handle the eviction program. The request for the warming si- shelter facility requires. An amendment to the Annual Action Plan of our twenty twenty year, which is underway with that public meeting. Uh, happening on September twentieth at three PM in my office. Based on those comments received and direction that will be brought to council for approval of that time. And based on on that, tho- those are the immediate actions.
Okay. Are are we good to move forward to hear from the public about the action plan then, council? It sounds like so, so thank you, Mr. Hadameo, for all your hard work on this and thank you to the Advisory Committee members too. I know that that's a lot of meetings and work, so thank you for putting that together. Sounds good, thanks, Brian.
All right, thank you, good night.
All right, so that concludes then our work session agenda. Um, I'm going to conclude this work session at six forty-three PM and we will have the regular meeting start at seven.